Six thirty to your point of time to start our planning commission meeting. Please stand and join us in prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
If you pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us over this weekend, Lord, and this special Easter weekend. God, I thank you that again, we've had an opportunity to meet as a city. I pray that you grant us wisdom and guidance in the decisions that are made here tonight. Thank you for these volunteers, Lord. I pray that you would watch over and protect our families while we're away from them. Lord, I pray that all those who place themselves in harm's way for our benefit, that you'd protect them. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Call or roll, please.
Paul Kaiser. David Hunt.
Here.
Jim Lamb.
Here.
Jack Young.
Here.
Mandy Young.
Here.
Curtis Sigler.
Here.
John Conroy.
Here.
Ken Demetrio.
Here.
Greg Easton.
Yeah, here.
All right, was someone who's a chance to have a review of the minutes, see if they need any corrections, or could get a motion for their approval?
So moved.
Second.
Call or roll, please.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes. All right, the first item is a continuation of special use permit for the Christian Life School use at ninety-three seventy-five Davies Plantation Road. Director Taylor.
Mr. Roy Lamaca, TMI, Royal College of Christians, Mount Airhead, requesting my commission of a favorable recommendation for a special use permit to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for an existing church.
Oh, okay. For an existing church to expand its current special use permit for a school use on their property, which is located at ninety-three seventy-five Davies Plantation Road, within the RE residential estate zoning district. This is a continuation of the December fourth review by this commission in order to give the applicant the opportunity to obtain a traffic study, since there were concerns from neighbors, residential neighbors regarding traffic issues. A conceptual site plan was provided to add a seventeen thousand four hundred and thirty square foot building to operate a school with a maximum of a hundred and fifty students and a two thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot, fifty-three square foot playground. Last month, the applicant received site plan approval from this commission to construct an additional building and playground, which was also a part of the original conceptual site plan from the two thousand and twelve special use permit, but only without the school use. Engineering staff is here tonight to answer any questions regarding the traffic study and prior to your recommendation and vote to send to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. Thank you.
Questions for Director Taylor? Seeing none. The applicant, come forward, please.
Roy Lamaca, one-one-two-one-three, Goat Drive. Here for any questions you may have about the traffic study? I didn't actually, didn't actually work myself, but I did talk to the guy that did, so I am permitted to already what he had in report, so.
Questions for the applicant?
Is some, is someone going to explain the traffic study?
We can, if you'd like.
I mean, I think, I think it would, it would be best if we actually heard it.
I believe probably the best explanation, if you can turn in the engineering conditions, and I know you've, you've read those, but just, just to briefly go over those. So this study encompasses, I think this is on the last page, second to last page of the engineering comments, on item eleven, trap, or excuse me, item twelve, number twelve. The study covers three intersections, two of those which are in Bartlett, one which is in Lakeland, Davies Plantation in Canada, in Canada Road. And so currently, the two intersections in Bartlett are currently operating at a level of service A. Now, what is a level of service A? That's a scorecard. It's like, think about like your report card, A is great, B is, is good, and so on. And the level of service scores the efficiency of, of our roads and our signalized intersections. So currently, as you, as you look on there, thirteen, the two intersections in Bartlett are currently operating at a level of service A at all times of the day. So that's Hillman and Davies Plantation, and Davies Manor and Davies Plantation, both of those score an A. Now, that's currently. Now, at the addition of fifty students in twenty-twenty-five, they will still, the, the resultant traffic of those two intersections will still be at a level of service A. So it's still performing excellently. If we project to twenty-thirty, you see the next statement says the addition of a hundred and fifty students in twenty-thirty does drop Davies Manor and Plantation to a level of service B only in the PM peak. Level of service B, it says it's acceptable, that's still very good, with very excellent efficiency for our tra, traffic signals, our roadways. And so the traffic study does go on to say that Davies Plantation in Canada currently operates at level of service C. Now, again, that's not in Bartlett, that's east in Lakeland. And so this additional traffic, what we will make a recommendation to Lakeland, to Emily Harold, the city engineer, that they may want to at some point retime their, their traffic signal at that location, but that's Lakeland, not us. So because of this, even at twenty-thirty, the traffic study, which was, I mean, I say it's, it's a good traffic study, it covers the area, the area that's in concern that you've seen on the map, and still, and still even in twenty-thirty, we're still at a level of service B. See no reason why we couldn't give a favorable recommendation on this.
Mandy Young has a question for engineering. So I know you said this number fifteen is not in Bartlett, and it's in Lakeland, but my question to you is, if they do not, because it's just a recommendation, recommendation to Lakeland, if they do not change their lights, their lighting there, that's going to then turn, and people are going to go in opposite direction back to Bartlett. Have we considered what that might do to our traffic then, especially with LOS B? Will that possibly generate that down to LOS C?
Well, even, even with the current projection, our roads, even at twenty-thirty, are going to be at a level of service B. It's only the traffic heading to eastward to Lakeland at that intersection is where it would drop to level, to that level.
But yes, if I'm stuck in traffic, I'm going to go a longer way not to be stuck in traffic, which most people are going to as well. So if that light does not get changed, most people are not going to sit and wait on traffic to change, they're going to go and cut those side roads. There's many side roads over there, you know that as well as I do.
Yep.
So that, and they are in Bartlett. So my question back to you is still the same, is that possible? And I know you're not a mind reader, you can't tell the future, but that could also possibly generate a different turn of events for this traffic study than to in Bartlett, right? Or will it not adjust enough to matter?
I just don't think it's going to be enough to matter, Mandy.
Okay.
I really don't. I just, I just don't.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
But it, I mean, what you said is true, is that Lakeland's prerogative to not change the signal timings? It is, but I don't know why they wouldn't. And particularly with another development that they're working on currently now, between the church and Canada Road, they're going to have to retime that signal because of the Ashmont development, which is east of this location, would be, in my opinion.
Has Pickering yet shared this with anybody in Lakeland?
Has what now?
I know that Lakeland has not shown any interest in helping Bartlett with their roads, but has Pickering shared this about retiming the lights and so forth that are in their area?
I don't think they have yet.
Let me ask this, is the City of Bartlett going to forward this on?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have a, I'm going to say a good working relationship with Emily Harold, the city engineer of Lakeland.
Okay.
And so I would think Emily would appreciate this information.
Okay.
But once again, the development that's going on under construction is a much larger development than this. What we're talking about here, this is a drop in the bucket compared to the Ashmont development. And so that's going to be a much greater concern to them for signal timings at Canada Road and Davies Manor.
Other questions for engineering?
I do have one more question, and this may go back to planning, and I apologize for going back, but the maximum number is one-fifty for students, is that correct? If...
That's correct.
Okay, so if it goes over a hundred and fifty, is that a, is that a state number that you've applied to, to the state, that that's the max students you're going to have?
That's just a number I believe we're doing a cap at, is that?
It's the capacity of the building.
Yes, capacity of the building.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering if it ever got over that, if there was something they would have to come back and things would have to be looked at further?
So if you wanted the resolution of the SUP to include that one-fifty cap, then they would have to come back to you and revise the special use permit for a greater number of students at that time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, other questions for engineering or Director Taylor? For the record, let me get this in the record, are you agreement with the conditions?
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else for the applicant?
And I do want to just ask, again, just for the record, this is not going to be a drop-off line, where there's a line and there's a drop-off and pickup, I mean...
No, sir.
A parent's going to have to come in and park and bring their child in and...
So yes, yes, sir.
Park and pick them up and leave, okay.
The intent, the intent here is to have parents come in, park in the parking lot, walk kids into the school, drop them off, pay the cars and leave. So no, no drop-off lines, no car line to back up traffic anywhere.
Right, that's what I was getting at.
Walk them in and then leave.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions.
Anything else for the applicant? Go ahead.
Mandy Young for Director Taylor. Can you make a clarification for me, please, just to make sure I understood? You just stated that a hundred and fifty students is the cap, correct? If they wanted more, we would have to put it in here, or no? Can you repeat what you said, please?
I said that in your vote, if you, if you, if you capped it at a hundred and fifty students, that would be written into the resolution, that goes to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen. And then later on, if they wanted to increase that number, they would have to come back to the Planning Commission to increase that number, they'd have to amend their SUP, and then go back to the Board of Mayor and Aldermen to get another resolution drawn, amending that prior SUP.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I got this vision in my head, two years from now, Ed's going to go out there and count heads, make sure we don't have over a hundred and fifty. How do we, you know, is there an, how do you enforce that, you know, without sending somebody out there to say, "How about it, guys, can I see your enrollment?"
You have the enrollment sheets, for sure. You also have the building capacity, is, I mean, you can't go over that because of bar marshal, you have capacity issues with, with fire department as well, so you can't, you can't just start adding more kids just because.
Trying to make sure we don't pass something or agree to something that we don't, can't, don't want to enforce. Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the applicant? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I would like to make a motion for approval for the Christian Life Tapperton Chapel, complying with all of staff's comments in adding that there would be a cap of a hundred and fifty students max. And if they exceed that number, that they would have to come back to planning, come back to staff.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call or roll, please.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
No.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes. That item carries. Our next item is a master plan application for the Ba Legacy Square subdivision at fifty-nine oh five Stage Road. Director Taylor?
Mr. Dave Watkins with the Reeves Firm on behalf of the developer, is requesting Planning Commission approval of a master plan for the Ba Legacy Square subdivision. The property is located at fifty-nine oh five Stage Road, and it is within the CGMS, General Business Main Street Overlay Zoning District. The property is currently the location of the Ba Family Medical Building, that was the former location of the Easy Way Grocery Store. The property is currently not a legal lot of record. Approving this master plan for this commercial subdivision will be the first step in generating a legal, a legally approved commercial subdivision. The applicant will later return to this commission for construction, final, and site plan approvals. The property is currently two-point-two-four-six acres, and it will be subdivided into two lots, with Lot One being proposed point-one, point-eight-six-one acres, and Lot Two being proposed as one-point-three-eight-five acres. Lot One is the future site of a coffee shop, and Lot Two will remain as the Ba Family Medical Building Lot. Access to this subdivision will be from existing curb cuts on Stage Road. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions listed in this report.
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make one amendment on one of the conditions, if this would be okay now?
All right, go ahead.
If you would turn to the final page of these engineering conditions, item number nineteen, I would like for it to read, "The plat should reflect the stream buffer on Lot Two with a width to be determined by the city engineer."
All right, do that again, please.
Okay. "The plat should reflect the stream buffer on Lot Two with a width to be determined by the city engineer." And then the remaining two sentences remain as they are.
All right, this is as opposed to the hundred and fifty feet?
Yes, I want the, I would like to have the hundred and fifty feet removed for us to be able to look at that further.
Everyone pick up on that change? All right, any questions on that? If not, have the applicant come forward, please.
I'm Dave Watkins from the Reeves Firm, and I'll try to answer any questions.
Excuse me, please speak up some.
I said, "I'm Dave Watkins from the Reeves Firm, and I'll try to answer any questions you have." I'll say this, we don't have any issues with the staff report. We did discuss the, the buffer, and, and are happy with that, and so we understand the conditions as they're laid out right now, and have no problems with them.
Questions for the applicant?
The question about this building, what is this building used for now? I know in the days, it was a...
The existing building is a, is some sort of medical facility.
And today, it's used for...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other questions for the applicant?
Do you have a commitment for the coffee shop that was mentioned?
Do we have a commitment? Yeah, that's sort of spurring the thing, the Seven Brew, they're a national firm. Oh, anyway, yes, we do. And, and the, I'll say this, some of the conditions will require some cooperation between the property owner and the future user. But if we can get a conditional approval based on what we, is in the staff report tonight, then we will go and try to work that out.
Go ahead.
I have a question for staff. I know several months ago, it was proposed, this same lot, correct me if I'm wrong, would be the car wash, is that correct? And of course, we knew the traffic in and out, we, we knew that was going to be an issue, again, if this is a retail, or not retail, excuse me, a, a restaurant, I'll call it restaurant, that again, will have a drive-through.
It's strictly drive-through.
They've got it, one of them, over there on Witten Road right now. And so you're, again, you're going to have some of the same type of traffic turnaround coming through. I'm going to say it might not be as much as the car wash, because the car wash, you know, you, you'd have the car wash, you'd have the vacuums, you'd have different things, a lot, a lot of people would probably use that, a lot more. I'm just wondering, will, will that's something, will we need to look at that as far as a traffic issue, or concern, not issue, but just a concern, because I know, again, the school's right there, a lot of stuff's going on right there at that intersection. I'm, again, I'm, I'll say on the record myself, I'm glad it's not a car wash, but, and I don't think the coffee shop will be as intense, I guess that was the word I was looking for. The, the traffic won't be as intense, but it'll be there. And it could be some concern for the school, and I know the kids probably would like that, but the ones that can drive or, or walk over there. But again, I'm just wondering if that's something we need to be proactive instead of reactive when it comes back in front of us, that the traffic to be looked at at that time?
Yeah, that's the reason why item eighteen is in there on the three driveways.
Did I miss it? Okay.
No, 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 you, you, you didn't. It's, there's a mention, "The existing three driveways are under review." As a general rule of thumb, a driveway per lot, and in a case like this, it would be our opinion that for this future lot, that it could share a driveway with the existing lot that is right there, we're saying this guy. That's what I think is the best use.
Right.
And so now, there's another one that's shown on there. So that's the reason why we worded this, "Most likely," one of these three needs to be eliminated, in our opinion. We didn't completely shut the door because we wanted to see, is this going to be a coffee shop, or is there some other use, but...
So that's still kind of in the air a little bit?
It is, and I'm leaning really strongly that we only need two driveways for these two lots. We don't need three because of Stage Road and the traffic we've got. But I wanted to have, I wanted to have an opportunity to meet with Kay and, and the owner, Dr. Ba, as well.
Okay.
Because I know he's trying to make a decision, does he want to do this subdivision or not? He wants to make sure that it doesn't impact his current business.
Right, right.
And so hadn't had to, we haven't had a chance to meet with Dr. Ba, and so that's the why this is, why this is worded here somewhat loose.
Okay, all right. As long as it's kind of on the radar?
It's on the radar, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you, John.
Would it, would it be revisited, let's say the coffee shop concept doesn't materialize and something else does, the part, the study would probably come up again, I would imagine, based on what kind of business might go in if it's not the coffee shop?
Maybe so, and then we need to continue discussions with T-Dot, because ultimately it's, it is T-Dot's call, so.
Oh, okay.
If the Seven Brew is what goes in there, there's absolutely no reason why they would need three driveways. I would think they would be very pleased with the in and out, the way they're set up on Witten Road.
Yep.
So I mean, problem could very easily be solved if that's what's going in there, and I would love to see one go in there, for the record.
Mandy Young for the applicant. So I know you said you agreed, I just want to make sure you agree with the changes we made on number nineteen, that City of Engineering made, is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
Actually, something we were looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And are you in agreement if, with a two driveway solution?
Well, if, if that's what comes out, I mean, yeah, we're not, we don't feel like we necessarily need three driveways. I guess I felt like that was going to really be more of a T-Dot issue. Is that, is that true?
It, it's more than just a T-Dot issue. I'm, I'm almost to the point to where I want to firmly say two driveways for these two lots.
Yeah.
But I want, I just wanted to leave the door open to have a discussion with Dr. Ba.
Right.
And I haven't had a chance to do that, so.
And I think that if the, were you thinking that if the, if we eliminate a drive, that in reality, we might take out two and put in a new one?
What I was, what I was hoping for is this center lane right now, which currently Dr. Ba is using, using only as in, and then the other driveway to the east, he's using only as an out. And so that center one, if that could be shared amongst the two lots, to where Lot One could utilize that as in and out.
Okay.
You know?
In and out, yeah.
And then we put in a shared ingress egress easement across the two lots, where they both share that driveway.
Yeah.
To me, that's perfect, and we eliminate the one further to the west.
Yeah, I was just a little bit worried that if the east driveway, if the coffee shop would have to use the east driveway as an exit. But if, if the center drive that's there right now, if that's an ingress egress, then I don't think we'll have any problems with that.
I think that's a perfect, perfect solution.
Anything else?
So John, you're saying that that one in the center, the center one, would have to be expanded, to, couldn't, to...
The width, the width would be determined, because what we, I think what we found was, these are not, these are not ADA compliant. And the comment, comment number eighteen, the driveways are not correct width, and they're not ADA compliant, so we'd have to look at the width.
Yeah.
And we'd have to make them ADA compliant.
Yeah, even, yeah, even the west drive, it's not, it's not a compliant.
But I would think that'd be a, I'm not saying a cheap alternative, but I, I think if that would solve the issue, that would be a good, good solution. So yeah, the width is up for gr... So, yeah, the width is up for grabs, and they're not ADA compliant, so they may have to be totally...
Right, so they're gonna have to be replaced anyway, or something to that. And then the one on the very far end, the west, that's gonna be taken away? Or is...
What I'm assuming, what my opinion would be...
Gonna take that one away and expand the one in the center more than likely? Or make it ADA compliant?
Yeah, I don't think we'll have a problem with that.
I know that's still in the future, but I was just...
That's where we're leaning very strongly towards, yeah.
All right, anything else for the applicant or staff? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
There are no other, I move we approve with the recommendations of staff, including the engineering conditions on the driveway.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, call or roll, please.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes. That item carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3 is a final plan application for the Reeves subdivision of lots 51 and 52 on Ellendale Highway subdivision at 7205 and 7215 Andrews Road. Director Taylor?
David Bray with the Bray Firm on behalf of the property owners is requesting Planning Commission approval of a revised final plan for the Reeves subdivision of lots 51 and 52 of the Ellendale Highway subdivision. The property is located at 7205 and 7215 Andrews Road, and it is within the RS-18 Single Family Residential Zoning District. The Ellendale Highway subdivision was recorded in April 1919, and the subject parcels can be identified on the original plat as lots 51, 52, and 53 within Block A. At some point in history, the lots were reconfigured into two lots, known today as lots 51 and 52. The request by the current owner of the property is to reconfigure the lots to generate an additional lot with Lot 51 being 21,850 square feet, Lot 52 being 63,221 square feet, and Lot 53 being 43,560 square feet. Access to the lots will be from Andrews Road. The lots will meet the zoning ordinance requirements. Staff has reviewed this request and recommend approval with the conditions as listed in your staff report.
Questions for Director Taylor? Seeing none, will the applicant come forward, please?
David Bray with the Bray Firm, 2950 Stage Plaza North, Bartlett, 38134. Happy to answer any questions you have, we're in agreement with the conditions outlined by staff.
Questions for the applicant? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I motion to approve with the conditions recommended by staff.
Second.
Call or roll, please.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes. That item carries. Finally, item 4 is a site plan application for a Calhoun Memorial Temple at 8069 Thorn Road. Director Taylor?
Ms. Brenda Walls with M&amp;B Enterprise on behalf of the Calhoun Memorial Temple Church is requesting Planning Commission approval of a site plan for a new church annexed building, which is actually an existing building that will be modified and added on to, to build a church help center. The existing building is located at 8069 Thorn Road and is within the RS-15 Single Family Residential Zoning District. The property is also located within the Dr. W.T. Horton subdivision, which was recorded in 1918. The Horton subdivision was annexed by the City of Bartlett in 2004, and the pre-existing conditions of this subdivision, having small, narrow lots, has caused a need for variances through the Board of Zoning Appeals. In October, on October 19, 2023, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved seven variances for this proposed site plan. The approved variances included setbacks, landscape, streetscape widths, and lot size requirements. A church was constructed across the street from this site. It also required a number of variances in 2005. The church and an existing parking lot and the proposed help center will occupy three corners at the intersection of Thorn and Clarence Roads. The new church help center will be expanded from 728 square feet to 4,499 square feet on an existing 16,988 square foot lot with handicap accessible parking. Additional parking will be utilized in the shared parking lot across the intersection. Staff has reviewed this application and recommend approval with the conditions as listed in the staff report.
Questions for Director Taylor? I have, what is a, what is a health center in this context?
Help center? It's a place where people go for help when they're in need, for clothing, or shelter, or assistance and learning tools to live by. There's an explanation in your staff report that explains a lot more of the features of the health center.
Okay, thank you.
When you say shelter, does that mean someone could live there?
I believe it's for temporary, like if there's a fire or something like that.
Okay.
The church members can answer that, I believe they're here tonight.
Other questions for Director Taylor? All right, thank you, applicant come forward, please.
Brenda Walls, 8026 Northwest Brook Road, Bartlett, Tennessee 38002.
Thank you, are you agreement with the conditions, comments the staff has made?
Yes, sir.
Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, again, do you intend, will there be people actually living?
No, we're not intending for people, you know, it might be an overnight thing, but nothing to live in, you know, because it's more for repasses and, you know, in and out, you know, health situation.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, the existing building there now is like a...
A health center, yeah, it was a computer lab.
It's a community center, I think is the way it was before, right? Is that correct? Okay, and you're just expanding on to that according to the plan?
That's correct.
And you're taking the RV pad out, is that right?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
I motion to approve with the conditions staff has set forth in our planning book.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, call or roll, please.
Greg Easton.
Yes.
Paul Kaiser.
Yes.
David Hunt.
Yes.
Jim Lamb.
Yes.
Ken Demetrio.
Yes.
Jack Young.
Yes.
Mandy Young.
Yes.
Curtis Sigler.
Yes.
John Conroy.
Yes, that item carries. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We did not, but we did wanna bring up the fact that next month's Planning Commission is scheduled for May 6th at 6:30, but the Bartlett High School graduation ceremony is that same day at 6:00 P.M. So, we wanted to see on the chance that other people may also need to attend, if y'all wanted to move it to either that Tuesday, the next day, or maybe the following Monday.
I'm good with either.
All right, is there consensus here?
I was gonna say, I'm good with any one of the three.
Following Monday, which is the 13th?
Yes, yeah, I'm trying to...
All right, is that... All right, make it the 13th.
13th, okay, May 13th.
Make sure it's sent down a lot of...
Reminders, yeah, I'll remind myself as well.
All right.
Not May, but some of these folks are...
Just for the record, I might not, I might not be here on May 13th either.
As long as we can get five, we're good, we'll have a quorum. So, if five people can make it, we're golden.
Good.
All right, with that, we stand adjourned.